This is the January 15, 2015, meeting of the Planning Commission Appeals Board, and we will come to order. Will the Secretary let the rolls know that all members are present? And will everybody join me, rise and join me in saying, "Pledge of Allegiance"?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the right of the United States of America, to the people who are with us, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Can we get staff to introduce themselves, please?
Stacy Webb, Secretary for Planning and Development.
Lindsay Amanda, Legal Counsel for Planning and Zoning.
Ricky Compton, Planning and Development Director.
Ben Moran, Planner.
Thank you. Also, I'd like to recognize council members that are here. I see Councilman Lambert, Councilman Scheck Snyder, and Councilman Clouat. I believe, is there anybody else I'm missing on the council? Todd Lambert, Councilman Lambert, yes. Appreciate it. We also have some Planning Commission members here. I see Josh, Lori, Ms. Chafesi. Am I missing somebody? No. Okay.
Brian, at this time, I'd like to move that you be elected Chairman of our group.
From what I understand, we have to make a, put that item on the agenda before we vote on it, and we have to vote on that agenda item to add it to the agenda. Is that correct, Lynn?
Yes.
If somebody wants to make a motion to add that item to the agenda...
I so move.
We have a second?
I second.
Motion approved. And now we can vote on that. This board has no Chair now at the moment, so we're going to vote on a Chair for the...
Again, I'd like to move that you be elected as Chairman.
Thank you.
I second that motion.
Okay. Motion approved. I'll take that, and I appreciate you all. The first item on the, on the agenda is the appeal by George Scheck Snyder property. Do we have somebody presenting that item tonight?
My name is Cynthia Stafford, and my husband and I own the property on George Scheck Snyder Road. And I'm here because of the appeal, because I feel like we were just unfairly, it was not justified for them to deny us approval. And I just want to give a little bit background on the times and the meetings that we've had prior to this. At the first meeting we had, we were instructed by the staff that if we changed the criteria of our, of our survey, that it would meet the requirements of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and that they would recommend approval. So with that being said, McLennan Associates came and presented it for the second meeting, and at the second meeting, the staff voted, I mean, wanted to, said that they would approve the amended map. So we just thought that it was going to automatically be approved, and of course, the lady that presented it with McLennan Associates said they see no reason for it not to be approved because it met all of the rules and the guidelines that were with the current Planning and Zoning Commission rules. At that time, they had numerous people that came up from the area that the property was in, and, you know, I respect their concerns, but I just wanted to kind of go over with them, with you, some of their concerns, and to kind of counteract them. One of their concerns was that we were going to make a mobile home park because we had three mobile homes there. Two of the mobile homes had been there for years. One of them was an old house where it sat, was an old house that was virtually tore down, and we put another mobile home there, and then we put another one there 10 years ago. It was, it's probably at least 600 feet off of the main road, and I can't tell you that you can visibly see it really good with the naked eye from the main road. And so with that being said, another reason that there's not a mobile home park there, or will never be a mobile home park there, is because it's not zoned for a mobile home park. And the second thing is FEMA is really the ones that they should be arguing with that put all that property between three to five feet under flood, so there's no way you could get any field dirt to fill that in for a mobile home park. So in, in reality, I just want to assure someone that there's going to be no mobile home park there. We have three mobile homes. We put another one there. It is there to the corner of the property, and we have 80 acres of property there. We don't have three lots. We have 80 acres of property. The next thing was, someone had mentioned that the people that were living on the property may not be the type of people you would want around the area. Well, I disagree with that, too. To begin with, I don't think it's any of their business who lives there. And then the next reason is, there was a lady that lived there, that was a school teacher at Sanamo, that lived there five and a half years with her daughter, and there was other people that lived there that was very good. And then there was one that we evicted that had two pit bulls. So, I mean, you're going to have good and you're going to have bad, but I don't see where that should be a factor for anybody to come and complain about it that lives a mile down the road. That's like complaining to the neighbor that doesn't cut their grass every week like you do. They leave their grass that grows up high. So that was one of the issues also. The next thing was their property values were going to be affected. Well, anytime you live in a rural area, you know you're going to have big houses, small houses, mobile homes, you're going to have houses that's fallen down, and this is just a part of rural life that has been there for decades. And you can go down Bluff Road, and they'll have a million-dollar home that was built in the last two or three years, and three spaces down, you'll have a mobile home. I mean, this is just part of rural life. So as far as the property values, I can't, I can't agree with that also. And then I guess one of the things was, is that we caused the hardship of dividing the road frontage. Now, we did have a lot of road frontage on the property, and we divided it, but it was all according to the rules that are in place right now by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I can tell you right now from being in real estate that this is a law that has been abused and abused and abused over and over and over. But I can also tell you that this is our first family petition, that we have never abused and abused and abused it, that you can go down and you can see three acres, four acres, with six and seven pieces of property and spec houses that were built on them. And people that had sold this family petition property right after the ink was dry, and there was no family petition, it was lots for sale down a little dirt road. So I feel like that I'm being singled out. I feel like that if the planning and zoning were consistent, and I know they have a new Planning and Zoning Commission compared to, you know, I know it's been pretty recent that they did replace some of the members, but even this commission, I don't think that they're consistent with what they vote on, and I'm going to give you an example of that. One of the things is, is that I guess following the, after that I was denied for the petition, we had, they had the public hearings for five other family petitions right after that. And these five family petitions, this is exactly what was said, and I'm sure the planning and zoning person that's here can assure me that this was done. They looked, they said the man's name, and they looked at Mr. Compton and the staff, and they said, "Do you recommend that this be approved? Has it met the regulations and the guidelines?" And they would say yes, they would vote, and they would approve it. There was no questions, there was a surveyor that presented it, there was no questions about children or anything like that. Later on, I heard something about that I never mentioned my children. Well, I have two children, I have four grandchildren, and three of them are young adults, but I never heard anybody else mention children with these five names. One of the people that came up here, and of course, none of the people, I don't, I don't know if any of them were here or not, but I know one of them was not here, that was a friend of ours, and he said he surely didn't mind me saying anything because he thought it was the most ridiculous thing in the world that they would turn us down and approve him. He has eight acres of land with lots of road frontage that goes all the way around like a tower over there off of, I think it's 920, 429. And he has two rental mobile homes there, and he has two children, and he had seven lots that he asked for a family petition for. And somebody, they looked and they said, "Did it meet all the requirements?" And they said, "Yes." Ricky Enam said, "Yes," and they automatically approved it. So, and, you know, he had two mobile homes there, he's got two children, seven lots were subdivided, and this is just, this is the reason that I'm up here. And I understand that they said that it's not a hardship because we divided the lots among the, on the front road. But this was a legal thing that we did, according to the Planning and Zoning Commission's rules at that time. We did not violate any rules. And so I asked the, the engineering firm that did McLennan Associates, the lady that presented it, I said, "Why in the world would they deny us with 80 acres of land, 100 feet right away, for two lots when they approved somebody for seven lots on a family petition with two mobile homes on it, two children, never asked any questions of any of the other four, which I didn't find out about the other four? But I could go probably back through their records, through the petitions that's been filed and been approved, and I think legally, it is just not fair, and I think that I could win in court if I went and presented this, but I don't want to do that. I just want to do what's fair and what is right, and like I said, I know that everybody has a hard job. I know the planning and zoning does the best that they can because, you know, they don't have a win situation either way. And when I asked McLennan Associates why they, she thinks that it was denied, she said she thought it was denied based upon the people that came up here and spoke against it. And I said, "But the people that came up here and spoke against it," first, I know that they kind of changed their philosophies on the last meeting, but first it was they didn't like the people that was living in the property. It wasn't maintained. They, "I was going to make a mobile home park." One of the, oh, one person said that he was mad because I built the, well, I put the trailer up too high. The parish ordered me to put all that dirt. I do not want all that dirt to be there. That's not my fault. So I feel like all the claims that they have made are just not legitimate. Now, I know that they're going to get up here and say, "Well, we still were not a hardship case." Well, that may be, but the rule is in place right now that allows me to divide those lots, leave 100 feet of frontage for two. We're not talking about seven like the other one got approved. We're talking about two lots on 80 acres of land with some lots along the front. And like I said, I can go back and I can show you four acres, five acres, eight acres that has been totally approved, and not one word said, and like I said, my friend has two mobile homes on it and plans on putting some other mobile homes on it. And I can tell you some of the other ones that has been approved and been sold. So that's, that's my reasoning for coming up here.
I'm sorry. Could you repeat? You said your friend has mobile homes on...
Yeah, he has two mobile homes on the property that y'all approved.
On your property? On your property, you're talking about somebody else's?
No, I have two mobile homes on my property that's been there for a long time in the back, and I have one mobile home in the front.
And you plan on, you said you plan on placing more mobile homes on the...
No, I don't have any plans for anything anymore. It's just a...
I thought that's what you said, I'm sorry.
No, it's just a matter of principle. No, I said that there are people that have got these family petitions right now that have been approved and have these lots sold the minute that they have them approved, and I think that each and every one of you know that because you can go down in the parish. I've seen two spec houses being built on, too, that were just approved. And so I just feel like I've been singled out, my husband and I have been bashed, and for what? I mean, for people that need binoculars to see the two trailers in the back and for one trail away to the corner of 80 acres? And the lots that I have on the front, I don't plan on doing anything with it right now. I don't know what I'm going to do in the future with it. I'll be honest with you, I couldn't afford to put mobile homes on every lot because you've got to build them up five feet. So with all the dirt and everything that is required, you know, in my opinion, what needs to happen is we need to go to FEMA, back to FEMA, and let them come back and review this whole Sanamo area. But that's another case for another day. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, but like I said, I just, when I look and I ride through the parish and I see all of these properties that have been approved, and I can dig up the records, and then when I talked to Ricky Compton the other day, I asked him again, I said, "Does the staff recommend approving this petition, family petition?" And he said, "Yes." And that is exactly the same thing that was asked of him on every one of these family petitions, the five after that, and they said the same thing. And all of these five petitions were probably approved when I would, I would say, less than 15 minutes, with no one there to ask any questions. So if you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer them. And like I said, you know, I just, I don't really like coming up here, and I don't really like people saying that I'm doing something that I don't, I don't intend on making anything that's going to harm anybody because we've never did that before. We don't have a reputation for doing that. And, you know, we're not slum lords for sure, and I do have two children. So like I said, if you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Stafford.
Okay, thank you.
Any comments from staff? Ricky? Ben? At this time, we'd like to open up public comment, and I'm going to ask that everybody respect the rules of the public comment period, and I said each person will speak for three minutes. If you come up here and sign the card, I think most everybody did. And do we have...
Yes, Lori Hoffman.
Hi, my name is Lori Hoffman. I live on Highway 936 in Sanamo. Um, I just want to stick with the facts, but I just wanted to address a couple of things from Ms. Stafford. I'm so sorry that her engineering firm, and you know, what they drew up for them in 2010, they divided the front lots of their property on the frontage, the six lots. The code that we've been going through is the original family partition code that has been throughout the years. Nothing has changed. They have closed up a loophole starting in 2015, but this is all going on what has been done. And in the family partition, you cannot create your own hardship. And when they divided their property, six acres across their frontage in 2010, that's what they did. And I'm sorry because her engineering firm did not inform her that, and I guess the Planning and Zoning Commission told her that it would be approved, but it's in the bylaws for family partition. So I think there's just a big misunderstanding of what a family partition is. And I don't know about all the other cases in Ascension Parish, and yes, I will agree. I'm sure there's been a lot that were not hardships for families, and they were all approved, but I don't know about any of those cases. All I know is what is happening on Highway 936. We do live in a rural area, we know what a rural area is, we all have property, we all love living in the country. The Staffords don't live there, they've owned that property over 20 years, and they've had cattle there for all of that time. We like having the cattle there, we like it the way that it is. We all have land, you can burn your own trash, you can do things in the country that you can't do in the city, and we don't want to lose our rural life. That's what we want, we want it to stay the way that it is. And just, you know, once again, it's nothing, we're not doing anything against the Staffords, we just want the, be followed by family partition the way it was written, and you can't create your own hardship, and that's what happened to them, and it sounds like that they weren't aware of it, and they were just steer wrong. Thank you.
Thank you.
Leonard Gronowski.
My name is Leonard Gronowski. I live at 45551 North Highway 936, and I'm here not to ask you of any special privileges or special consideration. What I am asking you to do is to support the ordinances and the rules of Ascension Parish that apply to this case, and that's the fact that this should be rejected on the basis that it was, it is not considered a hardship case. I also would ask you to support the other members of this planning committee. We've been, we've been here at least four or five times on the same issue with the same results, each time rejected by the Planning Commission for just cause, for just reasons, not for hearsay or she-said or any of that stuff. But I ask for your support in making sure that we comply with the laws and regulations. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Sue Heath.
I'm here with my neighbors for the same thing to ask, I'm sorry.
Sorry, your name, please.
Sue Heath, H-E-A-T-H.
I'm sorry, repeat that.
Sue Heath, H-E-A-T-H.
I'm sorry.
Can we start the three minutes over since I had to say my name three times? Thank you. Okay. I'm here representing myself, these neighbors, and the other neighbors that were unable to be here tonight, to request that you uphold the Planning Commission's ruling to deny the family petition. And the grounds upon which I'm asking you to do that are based on the Unified Land Development Code. The Land Development Code, Section 4092, says it's your duty as members of the Planning Commission Appeals Board to comply with and enforce the regulations set forth in the code, the same requirements that are set forth for the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission has denied this three times on the basis that it does not meet the intent of the family petition and does not show that a genuine hardship exists. And if you look at the two sections of the code that are applicable, we're talking Section 17-4026, the family petition, and the variance section, which is, I believe, 174093. The family petition is a variance, and as such, the variance section applies to the, along with the family petition. You have to look at both of them together. The family petition is clear as to what a hardship is. The family petition is based upon a hardship. Definition of hardship is whenever a tract to be subdivided is of such unusual size or shape that the strict application of the requirements contained in these regulations would result in real difficulties and substantial hardship, or as Mr. Compton generally identifies it as a lack of sufficient road frontage. And the, the code goes on to say that the hardship cannot be self-created. Like Lori said, maybe they got the wrong information from their surveyors, but when they had, they took the property in 2010 and divided their 80 acres into eight plots, they took all of their frontage. They had six approximately half-acre lots across the front, so that took all the frontage. Now, they did that by a simple petition. So now they're trying to use the family petition to further divide the lots behind that, and because of hardship, lack of road frontage, but they created that hardship in 2010 when they subdivided the property. So those are the rules, and that's the basis on which I'm asking that you deny this. I'll go on to say that, she says this is, she thinks she's being singled out. Can I finish my statement?
I'm sorry, ma'am, three minutes.
May I just ask why we only get three minutes, but it does not apply to the appellant in this case?
We're not going to go on a question basis here. That's the rules of the meeting, that's been followed in the past, and that's the way we're following them tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Dawn Gronowski.
My name is Dawn Gronowski, and I live on Highway 936, right across the road from the property that the Staffords own. They do not live there. And my understanding of the family partition is that you live on the property and that you want to divide it amongst your children so that you can all stay on the same property. That's the Planning Commission, the meetings, we've discussed it and discussed it, and we've also gone through all of the ordinance codes and everything, and we come up with, after spending seven months doing this, the Planning Commission has denied the request. And like I said, these were, the requests are based on facts in the ordinance. The, their, their request for family partition clearly does not meet the code requirements. As you've heard previously, I agree with everything that everybody before me said. Since June of 2014, my neighbors and I and the Planning Commission have been meeting and trying to ensure that the Unified Land Development Code regulations are being enforced as it relates to the subject family partition requests in our neighborhood. The family partition request by the Staffords does not meet the criteria set forth. In accordance with the LDC, Section 174092, Appeal Procedure, the subdivider requested the Planning Commission reconsider their decision to deny. This was accomplished at the Planning Commission December 10 meeting. There was no new information provided that altered the request. Therefore, the Planning Commission upheld their previous decision to deny. So I think that we should continue to be firm in our previous actions to deny this request. request. I don't feel like they're being singled out, and if they feel like other people have been granted, granted things that they weren't supposed to have, two wrongs don't make a right. We were looking for the, to uphold the parish code and ordinances, and that we have to follow too. So we thank you, and we hope that you will uphold the, to deny their appeal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Larry Bates.
Evening, gentlemen. My name is Larry Bates. My property is all on the west side of Mrs. Stafford's. I'm in Norman Fort Wall. But some things she stated here, and you heard all the griefs. I don't know if you guys are up to par of everything you've heard, if you've been following this. Against the people? No. Fact is fact. You know the truth. It's truth that sets you free. That's biblical. So what we have here is a breaking of the law. If you break the law, you guys made the law. If a man says, hey, I broke the law, I deliberately broke the law, well, the only way I look at it, you know, you're wrong. You know you're guilty, you're wrong. Hey, don't let it go no further. But Ms. Sue has brought something here in variance 17-4093. There must be a showing of unnecessary hardship, which she brought up to my attention. Evidence of variance granted under similar circumstances should not be considered. You know, I can tell you guys, this is my reason why. I've suffered a lot of hardships due to the facts. The tenants, I get along with anybody. But to give you an idea, 8:30, six weeks ago, I had a gentleman, one of her tenants, I don't know if he's still there, shot a high-power rifle either at the house or on the side of the house. Now, I could have done some, you know, get-back even. I'm not the type of person. But what my question is, if you've got people, you want to behave as citizens of the United States, as a person in Ascension Parish should behave. But when you step out of bounds, you know, hey, you're going too far. But with all that through the past, land value, I've checked on it. I have lost consideration of property value. I've got two acres now flooding I didn't have before. Why? Dirt. They have a right, as my understanding, to put dirt on their property. If it floods me out, hey, it's your fault. You know, hey, give or take something. But, you know, I treat my neighbors. I put ditches down, shall we say, drain my neighbor's property. What I've done is got, somebody's got dirt now, and what they've done is flooded my property. I had problems with the neighbors. I had problems with the value of my property now going down. I've got a lot of issues. Well, I throw it out the window to a certain degree. All I can say is I'm asking you guys to not, you've got the facts, you've got the truth. We've been fighting this. There's no sense in me going any further. But you guys, I'm hoping you have the wisdom and responsibility to act upon this and put a stop to it. I want to thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Any more comments from the public? Ms. Stafford, did you want to say something?
The only thing I would like to say is that they said that the laws were broken. According to the parish that recommended it, no laws were broken. We met all the criteria. And like I said, somebody just did a family petition with eight acres and had seven lots. We'll have a total of eight lots on 80 acres. You do the math. As far as the people living there and all these other things, I think that's just something that's not part of this discussion.
Talking about high-power rifle, I got eighty...
State your name, please.
Louis Stafford. I got 80 acres over there, and I do have a neighbor that lives two, two places down from me. He's a good friend of mine, and he's got permission to hunt on my place. He's got deer stands over on my place. I mean, it ain't like I got eight acres. I got 80 acres, and it goes way back into swamps. And I don't know where the gun was shot at, but I'm telling you that there are other people that live farther down the road that hunt on my place that I don't know. But my brother-in-law had took, they're friends of his. He told me they was hunting over there, and I don't care. But I did give Randy Wiggum permission to hunt over there, and he got a clothes stand on there.
Thank you. Any more comments? At this time, we're going to close the public comment period.
I've got a question. Can I ask a question?
Yeah, we're going to open up discussion.
Go ahead.
If y'all have any discussion, you can go ahead.
Looks like I read somewhere, are there black-and-white rules that tell us what constitute a hardship? I couldn't find them anywhere, and I looked. I couldn't find a black, black-and-white, and I was concerned about it because it was stated in one of the correspondence we had that there were no black-and-white rules that constitute a hardship. Yeah, yeah.
There are two sections in the code that I thought you had been given copies of. One is the variance provision, which is 17-4093, I believe. I don't have it right in front of me. Yes, I do. 17-4093. The other provision is the family petition, which is 17-4026. Okay. And the variance provision addresses variances to the subdivision regulations. The family petition is also a variance, but it has a separate section. The variance section still applies to the family petition. It states that in the family petition section. The confusion is the hardship definition is in the variance section, okay? The family petition says the hardship cannot be self-created. You have to read both of those provisions together, but it is in there in black and white. And I...
Mr. Anglau, I think you might be referring to the legal opinion that was given by Ms. Jessie LeBlanc.
Right.
It says, courts in their decisions have stated that each zoning case must be decided on the facts peculiar to it, and no general rule can be formulated as to what constitutes hardships or unusual and practical difficulties. So you have to analyze each case on a case-by-case basis.
So there's no blanket definition?
No, no, sir.
Is that what Matt Pryor had?
Yes, it's the opinion by Ms. Jessie LeBlanc.
But that's in the zoning section.
No, it's just in her opinion, and she...
Well, let me go one step further. The, the family petition section, which I don't have in front of me, states on the front page that all provisions of the code, with the exception of the construction standards, apply. The family petition states all other sections apply, which means the variance section does apply to the family petition. And it only makes sense to someone that if you have a definition for hardship in one section, and another section refers to hardship, that you have to look at that section for the definition. I mean, it's not just the word hardship. It is clearly defined, and you just have to look at both of those sections, but...
You were saying, you were saying...
Well, there's no language that defines a hardship. There is some language that says what a hardship is not, and there is language that says a hardship cannot be self-created. I think it's in your packets.
The opinion, Lindsay.
The opinion is in your packet, and I think the sections 174093, which is the variance section, should also be in there. The opinion is definitely there. It's in the very back.
Would you read it to me, please?
In its entirety?
No, never mind. Never mind, okay.
She, I will say this. At the very end, Ms. LeBlanc says, in the past, a hardship was considered that a family could not afford to build a road to parish standards to access their property. So, you know, anyone can say what the hardship is, and it's up to the commission, or now, tonight, you all, to determine if it is a hardship.
It does seem very vague to me, to be honest with you. I wish there was more, there was something more cut and dry distinguishing that, you know, but it just seems very vague to me, and maybe I'm just not smart enough to grasp it. That's the way it appears.
I think the new ordinance that was written, which doesn't apply to this case, obviously, it's cleared up a lot of that.
Takes that? Well, good. I'm glad, I'm glad that's done.
I don't think that's the case.
Ma'am, public comment period is closed. I'm sorry.
Well, I was just trying to answer the question.
I think you answered his question. If he's got another question for you, do you...
No, I'm fine. I'm fine.
But I disagree. I believe the definition is in there. I was just going to try and show you where it is.
Do we have something from staff? Ricky?
Yes, sir. I just want to add a little clarity to that. In Ascension Parish, there are two ways to divide property. You can do a simple division. That means you have enough frontage on a public road to divide your property with the proper width and the proper lot area. So based on your zoning category, that determines the acreage or square footage of your lot and the width, 90 feet, 80 feet, 70 feet, based on your zoning. Simple division or a minor or major subdivision. So a minor or major subdivision is either less than 20 lots or more than 20 lots. And when you build a minor or a major subdivision, you are building infrastructure. You're going to build roads to a parish standard, and today, those roads all have to have subsurface drainage. You're going to do sewer, you know, all the utilities. A hardship family partition, generally speaking, falls under the minor subdivision. You are building a minor subdivision of less than 20 lots, and you're doing a family partition, which means you're not going to build any infrastructure. The hardship is you don't have enough frontage to do a simple division, and you're doing a minor subdivision, but you're not building a road. You're doing a private access servitude and dividing off of that. So historically, since I got here in 2008, the hardship family partition has been, I don't have enough frontage to simply divide. I'm going to do a private access servitude and divide. The staff reviews those applications based on the code, and the commission reviews the application based on the code and whether or not they believe a hardship exists. If we were doing that all, then the commission would simply be a rubber stamp. They would just take what we said and just, you know, stamp everyone and go. It's when there is opposition to an item typically that you do get the public discourse, that you get people from the community to come out and talk. That is when the responsibility swings to the commission to use their authority to make a determination if the variance hardship, if that's all being met. And they make that decision. We, as staff, we look at it based on the code section. The commission looks at it on the code plus the variance and hardship. So generally speaking, that's where the hardship comes in. They don't have enough frontage to divide it along the front. They need to build a road, but the family partition says we don't have to build it to a standard. They're going to do a private access servitude.
Let me ask you this. You said something, and maybe I misunderstood you. If you recommend something and nobody objects to it, then it's rubber stamped? That's kind of the impression I got from you, that nobody was there to object to something, and it was approved. Well, I'm going to tell you, if that's the case, that makes absolutely no sense to me because then there's no standard. You understand where I'm coming from?
Yes, sir.
Correct me.
No, I agree. I can't speak for the commission because I don't sit on that board. I don't know the research that those individuals do before each meeting. They may go out and talk to neighbors. They may go out and visit the sites. They read the reports and look at things. I don't know. And so to say that they rubber stamp it, I don't think is a fair...
Well, I use that term, rubber stamp, but, you know...
And so those that do not receive opposition, yeah, they do look like they fly through the system, but I can't tell you whether or not those commissions did background research. I can just tell you that we review based on the code, and they apply the code plus the variance hardship consideration to their decision.
I've got another question for somebody. How did, and I'm curious about this, how did the Staffords create their own hardship?
So by definition, when you remove your frontage and you can no longer divide your property along the public road, then you're into the minor or major subdivision business. And so in order to further subdivide that remaining acreage, they would need to build a public road or a private road to build a subdivision. But instead, they chose to do the family partition way of subdividing the property. And when you look at it with the eye or the goggles of, does this meet the variance or hardship provisions, then you look at it and you say, well, what happened to the frontage? Well, they removed their own frontage. They're still the owners of those lots. If they didn't own them anymore, I think that the decision gets a lot simpler because it's a true hardship for that back lot. They physically can't do it. That's how they self-created the hardship, is they divided the front, and I agree with Ms. Stafford completely. They did everything according to the rules.
Well, I'm really confused now. If they did everything according to the rules, then why was, why is it being denied?
Well, based on all the information you received, every time that the commission made their motion, they gave you a reason for their denial.
Mr. Bongla, you got something to say? No comments? Ms. Anglau?
No, I'm still a little confused about some things, but no, I'm through with comments.
Do we have a motion?
I move we accept.
We have a motion to accept the appeal by the Staffords. Do we have a second?
No. I feel that probably after looking at all the DVDs and everything, that I think that it wasn't done in the spirit and intention of which the family petition ordinance was created, and I don't see if a genuine hardship was proved.
We have to make a substitute motion on that. You need to make a substitute motion, recommend of denial.
Okay.
If you want to do that.
Well, my motion is for denial.
Okay. I guess that puts the heat on me as the tiebreaker, make a vote. I feel that in the family partition rules as they existed, there is a hardship rule in those standards, and personally, I don't think that that hardship was, was shown in this case. So we have a motion to approve by Mr. Anglau and a substitute motion by Ms. Spengel to deny, for a substitute motion. Do we not approve the, if I'm going to vote to deny this, do we, do I, do we go the second on the substitute motion?
We vote on the substitute.
Okay. Well, I'm going to make a recommendation to deny this and go with the substitute motion. So the motion has been denied.
You second the motion.
I second his motion, the substitute motion for denial. The motion has been denied. With no more items on the agenda. With the meetings adjourned.
Thank you.